Welcome to the December 21st, 2016 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. At this time, I would request that everyone turn off your cell phones or mute them, and then please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Applications for rezoning and conditional use permits heard during tonight's meeting will be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations on the applications will then be submitted to the St. Charles County Council for their final decision on the items. The individual items and bills for these applications are scheduled to be introduced at the Monday, January 9th, 2017 County Council Meeting. Applications for preliminary plats heard during tonight's meeting will also be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission during the meeting. The vote on the preliminary plats is final. Only a recommendation for denial of the preliminary plat would be heard before the County Council. The following documents are introduced as a matter of record for the public hearing and regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, including zoning maps; the year 2025 master plan for St. Charles County, which includes the year 2025 future land use map. Okay, I'm going to give you a little bit of roadmap. I know there's not a lot of people here, but normally what we do is I read the application into the record. We ask staff for recommendation. After staff has given us some recommendations and their analysis of it, we ask them questions, if there are some from the commission. At that time, when we're done with that, we ask applicant to come up before us. They can present their application to us. They don't have to, it's up to them if they want to speak on it. After they're done with it, we then open it up to the public, and the public has an opportunity to speak on any of these preliminary plats or applications or rezonings. After the public hearing, we then bring the applicant back up to answer any questions or concerns from the public, and we have a chance to ask questions additionally. And then, at that time, we close the meeting, and we bring it back before the commission discuss a little bit more, and then we take a vote on it. Remember, anything that's voted on tonight will go before the County Council on the 9th, so there's an opportunity also on that, on that one, but I don't think we're really going to have anything that's going to be pushed to it unless we deny some of these preliminary plats. So, let's get started. We need a motion to open.
Full move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have some changes to the agenda, and that's the rezoning requested of 1208 Clearview Drive. I think I'm going to go ahead and handle that now, and I'm going to go ahead and read that into the meeting notes, so I think you're going to have to change it to that one if you would. Thank you. Applicant, rezoning request for 1208 Clearview Drive, applicant RZ1617. The applicant is Bax Engineering Company Incorporated. The property owner is Imogen Bunch Revocable Trust. The current zoning is Neighborhood Commercial District and R1E Single Family Residential District. Their requesting zoning is C2 Commercial, General Commercial District. The area is 2.23 acres. The location is on the northwest corner of Beverly Drive and Clearview Drive adjoining the city of St. Charles, and it's in Council District 7. There is a request to have this tabled by the applicant, but if there's anybody in here in the room that wants to speak on this matter, before we do that, you can. It will probably be coming before us, probably either next month or the month after that, I'm not sure. So, if that's something you're interested in here in the audience, if you want to speak on it, you can do that now, but you can wait until then if you want. It's up to you. So, yeah, come on up.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record, please.
Adam Robert Leininger, 1323 Moon Ridge Drive, St. Charles, Missouri.
Thank you. Go ahead, Adam.
I'm afraid, this is my first time here, so I'm not really sure how things work. I was disappointed to see the notice that came out gave an indication as to the change in zoning, but not really what that meant, or what would allow, or what was intended to go in there. It seems evident there's some plan for the property, but I've not been able to find that. I haven't had much time, but it doesn't seem readily available. I've heard rumors of a hotel. I would, if assuming that is the case, I would ask why there? Why is it necessary? And why not some of the other, what appear to be commercially properties available in the neighborhood already? Why do we need to change that location, which already has a historic house on it? Why is it necessary to do that to that property?
Okay. Well, Adam, unfortunately, we don't have the applicant here to answer any of those questions. I don't, I haven't heard of anything that's going in there. They haven't told us any of that on the commission, so I can't comment on that, and I'm sure none of us really can. So, what I would recommend you do is definitely come to the next meeting that they have, when this is actually going to be discussed. The applicant is going to be here to present their case, but I guess the staff can kind of give you an idea. Jan, can you tell them how the process is? How they get the zoning change? And then they bring something as a plan to us, too.
Right. They've requested the C2 General Commercial zoning, and the C2 allows them a variety of uses. And the Planning and Zoning Commission has to evaluate the rezoning based on all of those permitted uses in the C2 district. So, whether it's a hotel, or a bowling alley, or a restaurant, or shopping, whatever, the Planning and Zoning Commission still has to evaluate it as any of those uses permitted in the C2 district could go on that property, and if that zoning's appropriate at that location. So, that's what they'll be going into next month, hopefully.
That's good to know. Thank you.
I had a question, Adam. Where do you live in relationship to the...
1323, if you look on the map...
Can we have that map up there, please?
If you see just to the west, there's a block, the big house that's in the middle of that block, right there.
Okay.
And I walk past the subject property, going out for walks during the day, during the week, drive past it often enough.
I would dispute your shirt. I think 1969 was better St. Pass.
Quite possibly, I wasn't at that one.
I was.
I'm sorry. Keith, did you have, Mr. Hayes, did you have something?
Well, I just wanted to say, one of your first questions was, what's the difference between those zonings?
Yep.
You can be a better participant at the next meeting. If you look on the internet, at the county's website, you can track down the actual language in the ordinance.
Okay.
The C1 zoning, which it presently is, is called Neighborhood Commercial District, and you might want to read that and compare it. Then, the next section is the C2 zoning discussion, and that's for General Commercial District. So, you'd show up being a better informed citizen if you take a look at that.
I will certainly do that, and I apologize for wasting time tonight. Is there somebody I can contact to help me find that? Because I had difficulties tracking that down on the website.
Yeah, just call. Call the planning department. They'll help you.
Will do. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Okay, so I need a motion to go ahead and table this.
Full move.
All in favor? Signified by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Okay. So, let's go ahead and move on to the first rezoning request at Stable Lane. Let's give staff an opportunity to bring that back up. I'm assuming that's, yeah, okay. Application is RZ1616. Applicant owner is Four Arrows Ranch. The current zoning is Single Family Residential District with Planned Unit Development Floodway Fringe and Floodway Overlay District. The requested zoning is Agricultural District with Floodway Fringe and Floodway Overlay District. The area is 19 acres. It's located approximately 700 feet south and 350 feet east of the terminus of Clearlake Court, one mile south of the city of Wentzville. It's currently in Council District 2. Staff?
Okay. The subject property, as we said, was zoned R1B with a PUD overlay. This was part of the Mentor, oops, sorry, I grabbed the wrong one. The Mentor tract rezoning we did must have been in like, I'm trying to think when we went to the computer program, 2009, 2009, I think it was, that we did that rezoning. And so, it was part of a large overall PUD that includes the Lutheran Church that's up along Highway N. Since the economy, economic difficulties, they have not gone forward with the PUD plan, and different people own some of the, the Mentor family owned the largest part, but there were other investors that owned other properties, and some of them have sold their properties. So, this property that's outlined, the people who live in Lot 23, they have purchased the outlined property, and they want to have horses on it and things, and so they're rezoning it to A Agricultural. As you can see, the surrounding zonings are the A Agricultural, except for to the east is the Single Family Residential with the PUD. The future land use plan is offered low-density residential in the area. The agricultural area is on the south side of the Darden Creek there. And the land use is, it's mostly vacant around it, except for to the north of the subdivision where the people have purchased the property in. Staff is recommending approval of the zoning change. We find it appropriate, given that there's still the agricultural areas to the west. Also, there's flood plain on the property, and the creek is a real deterrent for zoning. I mean, it's going to be difficult to cross the creek with development and things, you know, the bridge work would be expensive and everything. So, staff is okay with the zoning change. The applicants weren't going to be here tonight, and so I'll just tell you that in our conversations with them at staff level, they told us that they wanted to build a stable for their own personal horses. In the residential zoning district, we couldn't give them a permit to do that because you have to have, the private stable has to be accessory to your home. And in order to have their home in this, all be on the same property, they'd have to boundary adjust all of this into the subdivision, and they weren't sure they wanted to do that. In the agricultural district, you can have a stable for your own horses on a property without a main structure, without a residence. So, that's why this is here tonight. So, and did I say staff is recommending approval? And we have no letters.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
So, if I understand this correctly, Jan, it was part of an overall part that was PUD that has since broken off into other owners, and then, in this part, they just want to more or less reclaim it the way they feel that the highest...
Yeah, from what I understand, like, the Mentor family still owns the largest portion of the area that was going to be part of the PUD, and this was other investors in that whole PUD concept. So, I mean, if you look at this, I mean, yeah, we're losing like six acres, no, more than six, sorry, 19 acres of this PUD. But overall, the PUD can still, if someone comes forward and wants to do the PUD in the future, they can still go forward and still have a considerable amount of land that we can work with land uses and, you know, the roadways to get a good road network and everything, so.
So, is this still part of that property? Or is it, it becomes a separate entity?
I don't think it was ever really part of that property. It was always, always separate, but these people joined in with that zoning.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Applicant's not here, so we'll go ahead and move to public comment. I assume there's anybody here on public comment, is there, on this issue? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of it and bring it back before the commission. I guess we need, is there any discussion on this item?
I remember very vividly walking that property, and also, we were, Gal and I were approached to be an investor in that at the time. Luckily, knock on wood, we didn't do it, but they were going to put, it's kind of cool, they were going to, at least the plans they were going to put next to the Catholic Church. It was going to be a big, I saw the architectural drawings for a big red barn, and the entire septic system for the development would be camouflaged within that, much like they did off of Highway Double D. But, yeah, I would be in favor of this.
That'd be a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Clary? Got a motion and a second. Mr. McBride, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Clary?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm votes yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Setley?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
That'd be nine to nothing. That one passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's move on to the next one. We've already done that one. There you go. Next one is a conditional use permit at 510 West Highway D. Applicant CUP1610. The applicant, sorry, is Jacqueline K. Cops. Property owner, Brandon R. and Jacqueline K. Cops. Requested use is a preschool, and the property is currently zoned A Agricultural. Area is 6.28 acres. The location is on the south side of Highway D, approximately 1,600 feet west of Holt Road near the city of New Melli. It is in Council District 2. Staff?
Okay. The subject site, as you can see, is zoned agricultural, and so are the adjacent properties. Land uses in the area include single-family residents and vacant agricultural to the north. To the south is single-family residence, vacant agricultural. To the east is single-family residence, and to the west are single-family residences. The petitioner's requested a conditional use permit for a preschool, and staff has reviewed this according to the criteria of the conditional use permit in the Unified Development Ordinance, and we find the use appropriate at this location. The property is along Highway D, so we're not bringing traffic into a subdivision, which we like for our conditional use permits. They have enough area there to, that we are confident that we'll be able to accommodate the parking spaces that are going to be required. It's one space per eight children. Anything over eight children will require a second parking space, any number of children over that, and if they have any, and then there has to be a space for each full-time employee on the maximum work shift. But with six acres to work with, we will have ample area to do this. There is one concern, there's a gate towards the Highway D entrance. It's well off of Highway D, but the gate is only wide enough for one car to pass, and the drive has to be at least 20 feet wide, going all the way through and out, so that we can have emergency vehicles come in and be able to move freely, and with another car passing them or something. So, staff is recommending approval, subject to the following conditions. A site plan in conformance with the preliminary site plan must be submitted to and approved by the St. Charles County Community Development Department, indicating the entrance, parking, and location of all structures. No conditional use shall be in active use until all conditions of the approval have been met. In any case where a conditional use is not in place or in active use within two years from the date of granting and/or in accordance with the terms of the conditional use originally granted or subsequently amended, then without further action by the Planning and Zoning Commission and/or the County Council, the conditional use or authorization thereof shall be null and void, and the number of children is limited to 10. Any questions of staff?
I may ask some if the applicant is not here. Is the applicant here? They are here. Never mind. Thank you. Okay.
I've got a question.
Oh, and no letters.
Just give us a couple seconds. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Sorry.
Yeah, I, Jan, I do see that one of the conditions is the entrance. As you're going west on, I think that's west on D there, that's a little bit of a blind turn. There's a little bit of a hill right before the driveway. Would that site plan encompass moving the entrance to the top of the hill there for sightlines?
When we, when we do our site plan, someone from our, it's not my review division, sorry, our engineering arm, they'll go out and take a look at and evaluate the site distance. We will also require, as part of our site plan approval, will require a letter from MoDOT, either that that entrance is okay for the change of use, or they're required to get another one.
Okay.
So, we have a couple safeguards in on that.
Very good. Thanks. We've got that driveway right across the street, too, you know. Anyway, okay. We'll go ahead and, any other questions of staff? Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the applicant up. And if you haven't, make sure you fill out a speaker's card, too, before you leave. Before you leave, you know, before you, come on up. You can both raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And state your names and address for the record, please.
Jacqueline Cops, 510 Highway D.
Oops, sorry, I'm daydreaming. Brandon Cops, 510 West Highway D, Wentzville, Missouri, 63385.
Go ahead, you two.
I just wanted to speak to the gate. We will be, we're going to make it, right now it's the one, I don't know what it's called, the cow gate?
Yeah, I'll talk about it.
Okay, thanks.
We have cows on the property, and like at night, sometimes if the cows are nearby, we like to shut the gate at night, just for like a safety thing, in case they were to get out, so they can't get on the road, if you get what I'm saying?
Good idea.
Just a safety thing, yeah. But no, we have gates all over the place, but it's like a safeguard, if you get what I'm saying. But we were going to, we have one gate there now. I think it's like 16 or 18 feet wide, and we're going to make a double gate out of it to make it plenty wide. The gate will be open basically at all times, except for like at night, when we're not, when everybody's sleeping, nobody needs to come in and out, you know? And that's only a very few times a year, because, you know, when the cows are nearby on pasture.
So, you guys live there?
Yes.
You plan to live there while you're doing the...
Yes. Well, the cows are my dad's. It's on a family farm, and we built the house on the family farm. So, we, you know what I mean? It's kind of, yeah, I'm just, and then...
And so, the preschool, though, I mean, do you, what, do you have a teaching certificate? Or what's the...
Yeah, I taught in, I taught in Rockwood, I taught preschool in Rockwood for 11 years. I have my masters and my bachelors in early childhood and elementary education, and I actually have a teaching blog, and I actually do professional development for school districts and teachers' conferences, too.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. McBride.
I was in your driveway. My wife and I were looking at it. The school is going to be on the house on the right?
Yes.
And I noticed also you have an electric fence around everything.
Yep.
Is that going to be on with children? I mean, you're going to have a liability issue if they get out.
No. We, I got to, like, we bail hay off of our field in the front of the house.
Right.
And then, maybe two or three times a year, we put the cows on it, but we always do it on a weekend, when there's no children around.
Also, you have a lake, I guess the house on the left, you have a pond. Is there any barriers so kids get out? I know we, we have a day school by us, and there's a pond, and boy, they have to put fences, and kids will be kids. If they get away, they're gone, and like lightning. Are they going to have access to any of the water on your property?
It can be addressed if needed.
The backyard, we will be adding a fence to the backyard, so when the kids are outside for recess, they will be within the fence. The only time they will be outside of the fence is during pick-up and drop-off with their parents.
Yeah. The driveway that's opposite you, I guess he does, sells out of there, the farm, your driveway goes...
That's my dad.
Oh, that's your dad?
Yeah.
Because I saw him out there today, too.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's my father.
So, you have never, so this is a new venture for you, doing daycare?
Yeah, I want to be at home with my kids more, so this is the best option.
Well, we live out in that area. I know the closest one is down at D and Double D, day school, and probably very good for the area, people coming in, and you're just down the road from the school as well.
Yeah, and both preschools that are near us, they only offer full daycare. There isn't, like, you have to drive like a good 20 minutes to find like a center that has half-day preschool, and that's what I'll be offering, is half-day preschool. So, for those stay-at-home moms that don't want to take their kids all day and pay for that when they don't need it, they can come to me and...
So, what are your operational hours going to be, approximately?
Monday, Wednesday, Friday. I haven't decided the exact times because D and Boone delay start school, so I'm trying to figure out what's best for parents for drop-off, but I'll probably give them, and I'm going to give them a staggered drop-off time, because it's just, it's easier for kids to transition in and out of the classroom when there's less people. Probably around anywhere between like 8:00, 8:30. So, like, ideally, like 8:00 until probably noon, Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Thank you. Any other questions with applicant? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and open it up to the public, and I see one gentleman here, and I'm not sure if you're here for this issue. Okay. So, I guess we'll go ahead and close the public portion of it, and bring it back before the commission. Is there any discussion on this request?
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve?
Subject to staff's recommendations.
We have a question over here. Keith?
Hello?
Mr. Chairman, you certainly can go ahead and do the vote, but I think we may owe it to these applicants to tell them about our latest experience from a few months ago, where the couple came, where that, at that time, it wasn't a married couple, but anyhow, the lady and her boyfriend came in, and they presented their case to P&amp;Z. They had some ongoing discussion with respect to code enforcement issues, and then they also had to deal with the state of Missouri to get their license, and the state of Missouri involves our health department in doing the inspection related to the state's license. I sure hope they understand there's more to do to get authorized to do business than just showing up in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the County Council here, so I think, are you familiar with all this? Yeah, well, based on tonight, I'd say you're right. Anyhow, I just thought I'd bring that up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, we have a motion from Mr. Ellis. Can I get a...
I'll second.
Mr. Griffin? Thank you. Mr. Clary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm votes yes. Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Setley?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Nine to nothing. So, that also passes. Thank you. Okay, our next one is PRE1610, a preliminary plat submitted for Proctor Estates, Mattson Hill Road. The engineering is Landmark Surveying Company Incorporated. Owner and developer is Michael D. Proctor and Catherine A. Proctor. Property zoning, A Agricultural, and its number of lots are two. Location is on the east side of Mattson Hill Road and Duke Road, one mile northwest of the community of Mattson, and it's in Council District 2. Is there anybody here on this issue? Staff, you got any recommendations on this either?
The plat meets our requirements, and we recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions for staff on this? Okay. Let's go ahead and bring the applicant up, if you want to come up and speak on it. Completely up to you.
I'm Shane, Shane Walterman, Landmark Surveying.
Come on up. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And you state your name and address for the record?
Shane Walterman, 21 Tulip Bend, Wentzville, Missouri. Business address, 802 East Main Street, Landmark Surveying, Wentzville, Missouri.
Go ahead, Shane.
This is just from Michael Proctor. He is wanting to build a home for him and his wife on the northern lot and sell the southern... the southern lot to a couple that wants to build a house that they know, and he has 10 acres, and in order to do that, he had to have subdivision plats, so, and that's why I'm here.
Okay. Any questions for Shane?
Do they, with that steep topography there, what, do you know anything about the requirements in terms of where they'll be, their home sites?
I actually do, because on the northern tract, there's a, where that property line, you see the, the split line there?
Mm-hmm.
There actually is an existing roadway that goes up into a building site on that northern tract.
Okay.
That's already in existence. Now, the southern tract will actually have to be accessed from Mattson Hill Road down there. There is an, already an existing entrance right there with a, with a small building site, so it'll actually be probably 75 feet from that east property line there, and we'll be facing out, it'll have to be facing out on Mattson Hill Road.
Got you.
And the northern part will be, the northern lot property has pretty far in the northeast corner up there.
Okay. So, they're going to, from your knowledge, try to preserve as much of the trees and things like that as...
Yeah, there's already existing building sites that have been cleared for whatever reason. I don't know why, how long it's been sitting there. And he's only going to build like an 1,800 to 2,200 square foot home up there, so he's downsizing, so I don't think there's going to be much of an issue.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close. Thank you, Shane. And we'll open up to the public, seeing that there's no one here. We'll go ahead and close that portion of it, too, and bring it back before the commission.
I'll make a motion to vote on this.
Mr. Griffin?
Sorry.
And Mr. Ellis? Thank you. Mr. Leonard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm votes yes. Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Setley?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
And Mr. Clary?[1744.33]